And we're live.
Five, four, three, two, one. Committee on Community Development, Tuesday, February ninth, 2021. Councilmember Golumback.
Here.
Councilmember Farallato.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Present.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Present.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Here.
Council President Pridgen.
Here.
Councilmember Bowman.
Present.
Councilmember Wingo.
Present.
Quorum is present.
Okay, from the top, please.
Item number one, reported sale, Norway Park, eight Norway Park.
Motion to table.
Motion is to table this item number one, seconded by Council President Pridgen.
Item number two concerns property deterioration, one eighty-two Bigford Ave.
Item's open.
Hey, this item is open. I believe we have some people here to speak on it. I'm not sure which council district that is. They just took it off.
It's University, Mr. Chair.
Okay, and did you have some people here to speak on it, council member?
They were supposed.
We have several representatives from the University District, Mr. Chairman. However, they have called in and we haven't had a chance to identify them with the registration. I know at least one of the callers ending in three zero four is here for this item.
Okay.
If they could be instructed to unmute themselves with star six.
Okay, um, Mr. Wyatt, maybe you could start by maybe if you have a little bit of background and then we'll get your constituents in to speak if that would be all right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This has been a problem property in my district for a long time. I've been a council member. And I want to thank Doris Corley from my office, but also who's the block club leader in that area that has been, the community's been plagued by this property and the irresponsibility of the landlord for a number of decades. And most recently, there was an individual who was shot and killed in that area, right at the property. And I noted there's been more than four or five murders that have happened at that location, and I'm not over-exaggerating. And so this is a real blight on the community, and they have taken a stand this time to have this issue addressed. And I want to give them the opportunity to speak up on this issue so that we can look at what we can further do. Because this is a type of dangerous things that are happening in our neighborhoods in which individuals who are irresponsible landlords take their hands off of the community and put houses or properties or rent out to people who they don't care as long as they get a dollar. They don't care about the activities that take place. They don't care about the effects that happen to that community. In this particular case where this individual was shot and killed, the body laid out for a number of hours until the police and the more folks could come get this individual. This is not what we want in our neighborhood, and this is a very, very strong block club. They are very organized, a lot of homeowners. So again, I take this very seriously and for it to be happening as many years as it has, it's time for us to do something now. Permits and inspections for getting involved with this as well, because it's going to take a full court press. I also want to thank our E-District Police that is also involved. I think Chief Menza and our CPLs have done a fantastic job as addressing these type of issues. But I think this may have been the first time that they will be getting involved in this particular, with this particular owner. But I want to step away and let the individuals who are in that block club speak. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Hey, thank you. Mr. Eartha, could you give them the directions once again on how to be able to speak during the meeting?
Sure. If you've called in for this item, if you want to unmute yourself using star six. The first speaker that we have on this list, Mr. Chairman, is a Carleen.
Okay, so Carleen, welcome to Council Zoom Community Development Meeting. You are, you have the floor. If you can hit star six on your phone, you should be able to speak or be able to be heard.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Thank you.
If you could just state your name for the record, please.
My name is Carleen Green, and I do live in the Bigford area. And the property that we are having issues with is an ongoing thing. I have lived here over twenty-some years, and the last couple, three years has just gotten ridiculously. This last killing was tremendous for me. It still bothers me. I'm sorry. I can hear the gunshots when I go to sleep at night, and I try my hardest to ignore it. But it's dangerous here. I have grandchildren. I have children that comes in and out my house. But the day that it happened, my granddaughter was with me. She was in school. And I grabbed her and we went in the bathroom until we knew the police and everybody was there. And then we came out of the bathroom. But as Councilman Wyatt has stated, the landlord, I don't feel, I don't know who they are because they change hands all the time. They don't care about our safety. They don't care about our children. They don't care, as far as I'm concerned, they don't care about anything except for money. The property is nasty. Even if we try to keep our areas clean, it's nasty, even like garbage. There's garbage there now. There's garbage been there for the last two weeks, and I mean trash garbage for the garbage pickup, not only just bulk trash, but the garbage pickup. That's an issue for me because it could cause rats. The garage has just been deteriorating. We've called several times on it, and it seems like nothing is getting done. I'm just concerned that if the landlord doesn't get people, I mean, get the right people there, that we're going to continue to have issues. Now, I'm a homeowner, and I don't want anyone running me out of my neighborhood because they don't care. And that's basically all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker is Sherry. Sherry, if you hit star six on your phone, you should be audible to us. And when you start, if you could also state your name for the record. Thank you. Do we still have Sherry with us? Okay, the next speaker is Loretta. Loretta, if you could hit star six for unmute and then state your name for the record, you are the next speaker.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Welcome. Welcome to our Zoom meeting.
Thank you. I'm not sure what I can offer except I've been a property manager.
Full name for the record, please.
Sure, Loretta Hicks.
Okay, sure. Go ahead. Thank you.
And I act as Vice President to Doris and the Bigford Edith Alice Block Club. And I've lived in the community for over, I believe it's been thirty-three years. And I live on Alice Avenue, and I'm aware of a lot of things that go on in the community as far as all the trouble that we have from outside, from property owners that are, that rent to tenants in the area. I also, my son and daughter-in-law, they also own a property on Bigford Avenue, which they have a very good tenant. We have no problems with. I've been a property manager in the University District and other areas of the city for quite some time. In the past, I no longer do that. And I have dealt with a lot of out-of-town property owners, even out of the country. And it seems as though there should be something that the city can do to determine who rents these properties that are rented to tenants that don't really care, and they're bringing a lot of trouble to the neighborhood. And anything that I can offer as far as the community, I'm welcome to do that. I'm not really sure what I could do, but I just see a lot that goes on as far as the property owners and the renters. You can usually tell the renters from the owners. In the neighborhoods, the houses that turn over pretty quick usually have a lot of problems. We've had quite a few killings as well on Edith, I'm sorry, on Alice as well as Bigford. So, and I have a son and daughter-in-law that also lives with me at present. And, you know, and I have grandchildren too. And I'm not really sure, you know, what we can do to stop the problems that we're having in the community. I guess that's all I have to say.
Okay, yes, thank you. Mr. Wyatt, did you want to speak?
Yeah, did we have Ms. Corley on?
I don't, I don't see.
No, she's not. She's not doing well today.
Okay, so I know that she did a lot of legwork as far as, oh gosh, a litany of documents for ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty years of the problem with this property. So we're going to be moving forward on this, working with permits and inspections and with the police department to address this issue because again, and as Ms. Green told you, she's lived in that neighborhood for, you know, many, many years. And this is not something that these folks have worked very hard to deal with. They're like, again, they're a very strong block club, have a lot of activities, working with residents. But we always have these few bad apples that, again, I believe this owner lives in Tonawanda. So again, you're getting a check, but you could care less about the neighborhood. So we need to put an end to such things like this. So I'm hoping that we can use the bounty laws to shut this thing down. Hopefully get a more responsible landlord that cares about the community. We would love to have people live in this neighborhood because it's a great neighborhood, great people who work together. But we can't continue to allow individuals who just want a dollar, allow these type of acts to happen to impact negatively our community. So we just want to table this for now, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, motion is to chair by Mr. Wyatt, seconded by Mr. Rivera. Next item.
Three, unsafe city roads.
Okay, we have, this item is open, and we have a gentleman here to speak on this. Mr. Hope. I hope I pronounced that right.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, welcome, welcome. Just state your name for the record, please.
Okay, first of all, can you guys hear me?
We can, yes.
Okay, my name is Abuul Hope. I live here at City of Buffalo, at Maston District. So, good afternoon, all the council members and all others. Thank you very much, all the council members, to reach me out regarding this issue. And especially, especially thank you, Councilmember Wyatt, for bringing this to our council meeting. First of all, let me introduce myself a little bit, so then everything will make sense, what I'm talking about. And regardless of everything, I'm a community person who always like works for the community. And, and also, I am a head of security of BACC located on Walden Avenue, which is Buffalo Islamic Cultural Center. Also working with Buffalo Muslim Community Services and Buffalo D A C and also D A C Watch Team, as well as we council member Brian Mollman. So, the last few years, I was living here, City of Buffalo. I moved from New York City. And City of Buffalo roads to me are not safe because, you know, every day motorists passing red lights, not stopping at the stop signs. They are very speeding, using cell phone and sending text messages while they're driving. And because of that hit-and-run and all other accidents are increasing in the City of Buffalo day by day. And the story, I'm going to share to a story now, which is, my wife was driving, driving out my sons. And while she's waiting on, on, on red light, and someone else like totally passed through red lights, and my sons are like, Mom, what happened? What just happened? They are like shocked. I mean, it shouldn't happen. Accident don't happen only because of like me or my wife driving or other people driving safely. It happens for other people too. So it was very shocking that coming from New York City, living here in Buffalo, where we think we'll have safe roads, because New York City is lots of people living there, people from all over the world, people thinking different. But in here, less crowded, but being like that, we are really shocked. On the other hand, I myself, being in the community, I, lots of people come to me and, and, and saying, how, how can we work on that? One of my friends was driving his wife and, and his pregnant wife, and, and somebody didn't stop on the stop sign and hit them and run away. So which is, which is, which is not acceptable, like especially here in the city. So all the council members, to all the council members that like us and our families are in danger definitely while we are driving on the road. So, and, and we are receiving complaints over the years from the, from the community members. We brought this issue to our monthly Christian meeting. And, and also, more or less, we, we did not see that much of improvement. And due to population increasing in the City of Buffalo nowadays, we have more pedestrian crossing roads than before, at the same time, more drivers on the, on the road. So we want our roads, roads to stay for everyone. If we work together, then definitely we can, we can make it happen. And according to our local medias, if BPD can give over a thousand tickets to make Route 199 safer because of one accident happened nearby Delaware Park, then, then definitely we need to make our whole city safe from rogue drivers for, for, for everybody. For that, what I think, our law enforcement just need to impose the laws, which is already exist. At the same time, we can, we can make community awareness through media, through our block clubs meeting and making announcement at public gathering, making sure that, like everybody knows, everybody follow the laws while they're driving. And, and because of this is constantly, it's day by day, and people are walking, people going to mosque, people going for shopping, people going different places, and also like kids nowadays walking on the street. And people are speeding, which is, which is not, not nice. And even I myself, I cannot let my kids like ride bike on the street because we are worried that like people are driving so fast. So I, I, I think we should like take this issue seriously for our kids, for us and for whole community. Thank you all. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank, thank you for speaking out. And I think that what you're touching upon is the dilemma that all nine of us have on the council. You know, we had at the previous meeting, the discussion about the cameras in front of the schools. And, you know, it's such a double-edged sword for all of us. You know, there are issues. And there are people that are vehemently opposed to the cameras and wanting to find people for speeding. At the same time, then we have other residents who demand that there be more enforcement. And, you know, it's, it's very, very difficult. And once again, I just want to commend Council President Pridgen's position and urging, you know, the different sides to come together and work together to put something, you know, together. Because I think sometimes, you know, we hear these different issues in different committees, and we don't realize that they're all part of sometimes the same problem that we have. And I think that all of us ultimately do want safety. We're just not exactly sure how to end up getting there. Was there anybody that wanted to speak on this? Councilmember Wingo, and then Mr. Bowman.
Thank you, Chair Golumback. Again, I want to thank Abuul for sending us that correspondence regarding the safety of our streets. Maston District is a highly densely populated district, and there's a lot of folks in Maston, and we have a lot of people in our streets all the time. Unfortunately, I can't drive down Fillmore Avenue without someone passing me across the double yellow lines. That happened today. And it happened on my way to my other office, and then it happened on my way from my office. And then while I was at Fillmore and Norflin, I was at a green light, and there was a police cruiser behind me. A taxicab driver made a left turn on a red light and cut me off right at Fillmore and Norflin. These are the things that happen on a daily basis in my district. And it's, of course, it's anecdotal, but at the same time, the statistics also prove it, I guess, based off the report we seen earlier in a prior meeting. That's why we have five cameras in Maston District. The data is informing where the cameras are. But also, the data is also not capturing the folks who are not getting caught, who are also breaking the law. We also have to consider the fact that there are people out here every day breaking the law who are not getting caught. So the data doesn't speak to that, unless we put a machine on every street to track how fast people are going on every street. I don't know how we can do it, but again, I do have the sentiments of my colleagues as it relates to collaborating and coalescing around the same vision of making sure that our streets are safer. And if we can do that, I believe everyone won't be satisfied. But at the end of the day, our streets will be safer.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bowman, and then Ms. Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to commend Abuul as well for speaking up for his community. They are at, BICC is at Walden and Bailey in my district, and I love Dry District, and Abuul always does a wonderful job advocating for his community. So I commend him for that. And I think it speaks to a bigger problem we have with our infrastructure in the City of Buffalo. Instead of, you know, only looking at ticketing, we need to really look at building out our infrastructure, better crosswalks. Just like in our last meeting when we were talking about the school zones and some of the suggestions that Mr. Rizzo had regarding overhead signage and different ways of traffic calming. We really need to look at that, and we need to look at that now. Whenever we talk about it, it always feels like a really long time away. It sounds like a long-term project, but I really want to see that become a short-term priority to really investing in our infrastructure and making these streets safer. As Councilmember Wingo said, some of the streets, like I think of Bailey Avenue, it's dangerous to drive. It's dangerous to cross the street at Bailey and Delavan in my district. So certainly support all of the traffic calming discussions that we're looking at. And I'm really excited to get those moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Hey, you're welcome. We're going to go to Ms. Hill and then Mr. Wyatt.
Hello, everybody again. So a lot of what I'll share is some of the stuff that I already shared in the other, other meeting. So my name is Jelonda Hill. I'm here representing the Fair Fines and Fees Coalition, but I'm also here in kind of like my independent capacity as an everyday cyclist. I ride bike, I ride my bike in all seasons. So I know what it's like to deal with reckless driving. Additionally, I'm also here as a board member of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Board. And so I totally agree with the concerns that Mr. Hope has. There are a lot of reckless, there is a lot of reckless driving happening in Buffalo. And that is essentially why I'm here today, because that reckless driving isn't going to be solved by upping traffic enforcement by the police or cameras or, you know, fines and fees. So, you know, the current design and construction of our streets endangers cyclists, pedestrians and drivers. And as I said, the solution is not the police. We have to make critical design improvements to all of our streets in Buffalo, which has been needed for decades. Hit and runs will not be solved by law enforcement, fines and fees and cameras. I'm sorry, I just said that. We need designing for interventions in the city that will slow traffic down. So just to give some data on why the police isn't the solution. Police traffic enforcement does more harm than good. Black residents in Buffalo and cities across the country are disproportionately stopped by traffic police. And disproportionately are victims to unjustified use of deadly force. So additionally, decades of police reforms have failed to eliminate racial discrimination and bias in policing. This is because policing itself is the problem, not merely the actions of individual police officers. Traffic stops also have limited effects on deterring speeding and other traffic infractions, refuting the claim that police are necessary to improve traffic safety. Traffic policing is financially extractive and disproportionately burdens low-income people of color with unaffordable fines and fees. Excessive traffic, traffic fines have been shown to decrease public safety. Other U.S. cities, including Berkeley, California, are removing police from traffic enforcement, and more cities are seeking to cut back on policing. And instead, you know, invest in traffic calming infrastructure. Traffic policing is expensive. Entrusting some traffic enforcement to unarmed, non-police employees would be less costly. Decrease the risk of deadly police encounters, create jobs and improve interactions with traffic safety officers, police officers. So yeah, I say all that to say that we must invest in, you know, traffic calming infrastructure in Buffalo. I do want to point out one thing. So striping, I don't know if you are like familiar like with, like with what it does. But like, for example, Bailey Avenue, it is almost designed as a highway, like the thirty-three, picture the thirty-three. And so when you put stripes on a street, what it does is it, it changes like the perception of the width of a street to make it narrower, more narrow. And so when drivers see that, they immediately kind of reduce their speed because they kind of see that the width of the street is a lot, you know, smaller. So it's just simple things like striping and speed bumps, as I said before, that are inexpensive and that can slow drivers down. Obviously, moving forward, we need more permanent infrastructure, but a good start would be, a good cheap start would be striping and speed bumps. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and Mr. Hope, sorry. I would love to talk to you more, Mr. Hope. So we can kind of work together to, to kind of slow traffic in the City of Buffalo. I think that that is absolutely important, as various, Councilman Pridgen said, and everybody else on this call. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. And I think it was Mr. Wyatt is next.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Abdul, again, thank you for this, and thank you for what you do in the community. You come in and been involved, and I know I haven't seen you in a while because we haven't had any community meetings. But again, I appreciate you putting forth your effort to address the issues in our neighborhood. And, you know, this is a balancing act. I know that, again, for the last several years, I've been requesting speed humps. I think speed humps are the way to go for us to slow down some of the traffic, although we can't put them on a major thoroughfare, but the areas that are most impacted, those side streets, this would be very, very important. So I'm hopeful with this bond passing earlier today that we will see speed humps in our, in our communities, that will address a lot of the issues regarding traffic as well as, again, infrastructure as far as striping. These are very basic things that we've been asking for that, it doesn't take a lot of money to do. It just takes the commitment. And when we talk about safe streets, this has to be paramount. It has to be striped. It has to be all those things that don't take a lot of money, just takes a lot of energy and effort. And as we look at this pause at this point, I'm hopeful that, again, this coming new year, that we'll have some new traffic design that'll make our streets safer for our residents. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Noakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Abuul. Thank you very much for coming here today and raising your concerns. We've met a lot of times, we've met a couple of years ago, and it's always a pleasure working. a, a lot of, of times, we, we've met, um, a couple of years ago and it's always a pleasure working with you. And I will text you Jolanda's information because I think it would be really great for you to get to talk to her. Um, and start tackling some of the concerns in your neighborhood, but also in neighborhoods, you know, in the Fillmore District that you work with me regarding and especially, um, near the mosque. That is, um, you know, in the Lovejoy District, but also borders the Fillmore District, so I just wanted to commend you for, for speaking up and speaking out about this concern. Um, and you should be very proud of yourself and I look forward to also working with you in, in continuation uh, in my district. Thank you.
Okay, uh, I don't think there's any other speakers. Uh, Mr. Rivera, I believe we could table this item. You're on mute.
Motion to table.
Motion to table, seconded by Mr. Wyatt.
Item number four, Common Council Vaccine Equity Response.
Motion to receive and file.
Motion to receive and file, seconded by Mr. Wyatt.
Item five, U H C Letter to Planning Board Regarding Four Hundred Kenmore.
Items open.
Hey, this item is open. I believe we have uh, two people scheduled to speak, uh, and I believe Mr. Cotton is here. Um, so, Mr. Cotton, you have uh, the floor hit star six, uh, so that we can hear you and please state your name for the record.
Sure, thanks so much. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, wonderful. Uh, so my name is Darren Cotton, uh, University District Resident. Uh, just wanted to thank all of you for the opportunity to speak and uh, special thanks to Councilmember Wyatt for bringing this to the committee. Um, so this is in regards to a self-storage facility proposed for the former parking lot of the Budways on Kenmore Avenue. Um, and the existing building that was Budways currently is a self-storage facility. Uh, so this would basically be uh, an addition right on the same uh, parcel. And our letter to the planning board as well as uh, the permits and inspection services um, to Councilmember Wyatt's office, um, to the Director of Planning and the two clients of the parcel. Uh, we're basically requesting a revised, uh, revised site plan for uh, the project, um, following stipulations that are uh, stated in the city's U D O, um, for strip retail parcels, which this is uh, zoned as. Um, and I don't know if you want me to read through the specific standards that the U D O um, states, but basically for lots over an acre, uh, it requires ten percent of total contiguous area to be designated as open space uh, such as squares, greens or greenways. Uh, so we're just uh, asking uh, the assistance of the planning board and the common council on revisiting that site plan. Um, so that it is following those specific standards. Um, and kind of some context for this, it's a stone's throw away from the North Buffalo and Tonawanda rail trails, so again, a really high-traffic pedestrian and cyclist, uh, piece of infrastructure serving the city and surrounding suburbs. Um, so it could be some really great synergy there, um, and we're just hoping uh, to figure out how we can find a way forward. Um, we totally understand self-storage is allowed by use uh, for this zone, so we're just asking that that ten percent open space uh, is given consideration.
Okay, thank you, uh, Councilmember Wyatt.
Mr. Chair, I just want to ask Corporation Council, um, is this, we haven't approved anything as of yet, I don't believe, for this particular item. It's just been before the planning board.
Um, Assistant Corporation Council Karen Gordon. If this item has just been before the planning board, it probably most likely had an approval. I know the, um, on it and so we would have to, and I'm not sure what the process would be for the planning board to go and revisit it if they have already approved it. I think the best person to contact would be um, Nadine Marrero, who's the planning director. Um, but if it has already been approved, there is not much that the common council can do. Um, I would say at this point, um, unless, you know, there, there is some willingness on the side, on the, the side of the planning board and also probably the applicant to go and revisit it.
Okay, so that, that's the only, our only option is to appeal to the owners possibly? And see if they would be really willing to revisit?
I would say first of all, um, I would probably check to see whether, Bethany, do you know if this item was approved? I know Bethany sometimes um, sits on the, um, okay. So I don't recall it being approved either, so I think the best bet at this point would be probably to table it. I could double check um, with Nadine.
Okay.
To see when this item was approved, if it was approved at all, and then we can start from there. Because if it wasn't approved, then it's different. We have community input. Um, the residents would get an opportunity to come and speak and make their, their um, requests to the planning board and the planning board can make that as part of its consideration for um, final approval.
Yeah, yeah, because their process is, is falling off tremendously. Um, this, I don't believe they had any opportunity to speak on this item. I was unaware that it was coming forward, but um, we need to tighten it up so that we are, I mean, I don't want to be, I, I don't want to slow down the process, but I do want to make certain the community has an opportunity to be heard on items such as this. Um, it's a great space, um, and to have that additional space that um, Mr. Cotton is talking about, I think is appropriate. It could be very helpful.
I asked Councilwoman Wyatt, is this the item that we spoke about probably a month or six weeks ago back, you remember?
Yeah.
Been approved, then it's been approved. Um, it was a site plan approval.
Okay.
The planning board, yes, and it was approved by the planning board. Um, I don't know if they have already started to, to work on the site. But my recollection is that when I did look into it at that time, it was already approved by um, the planning board.
Okay, so we don't have a, other than to?
No, because it's not before the common council anymore. It's, um, and it's not before the planning board either. The decision has already been made at this point. I don't think there's anything the common council can do more, um, more than to probably appeal to the applicant to see if he might be willing, but at this point, he doesn't have any. Um, I don't see how he would have a willingness to um, say, I would go back before the planning board for them to reconsider an approval that have already given me.
So if he, if we were to reach out and they were to agree to something, would that have to come back before the common council?
Um, I do believe it would have to almost restart the, the process. He would have to put in a, a, a site plan approval request again with the consideration of what the, the residents want, the ten percent green space. Um, or, or, you know, anything along that line and then go before the planning board again for them to review it and approve it um, all over again. So I, I don't know what the likelihood would be that he might be, you know, motivated to do something like that, but it would have hurt to reach out. Uh, because even at this point, maybe it's something they can do without necessarily changing the entire scheme or plan. Um, and they probably could just build, bill it in without, you know, running a follow-up on their design or any standards or requirements that are expected under the U D O. So it might be a question worth uh, asking or a conversation worth, worth having.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Uh, would I, sorry, would I be able to jump in real quick?
Sure, just state your name for the record, please, Mr. Cotton.
Sure, uh, it's Darren Cotton. Um, and so it's not so much, uh, I guess, a, a desire or an ask from the community as it is just us asking that the development ordinance be followed. So I don't know if there's, I know there is a administrative appeal process through the U D O. Um, but basically, the site plan that was approved doesn't follow the law as prescribed by the U D O, so I just have to wonder, you know, if that's the case for this development project, how can we? You know, how is there, um, how can we be confident that other stipulations that are basically law in the U D O being followed by developers?
Can, 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 um, Mr. Chair?
Wyatt, yep.
Uh, Ms. Gordon, can you look into that aspect of it? Um, just to make sure it's being followed, because I guess that's the, the major point. That it's being followed, so it wouldn't be an approval, it's just following the U D O.
Um, well, I could look into that, but I would also, um, I guess, want to impress upon the individual that there is something um, called zoning variances, right? And whenever you go before the planning board for a site plan approval, um, if the site plan approval would require zoning variances or would require that the design be something that would be unusual or not conforming with the neighborhood or the area in which it has been built, zoning variances normally allows for that applicant to request a zoning variance to have something built in a manner that is not um, uh, fitting with um, the, the, the nature or character of, of what it is that they're building, right? So at this point, I don't have sufficient information as to whether or not the individual applicant had requested a zoning variance. But if he did request a zoning variance and he did get an approval of the zoning variance, it will explain why this building would be built in such a manner, right? Um, so that would be something to look into. And then if that's the case, that he received a zoning variance under the U D O, there is an appeal process, but it's within thirty days. I believe this item was done at least six weeks ago, sometime in December or yeah, sometime in December, could be even um, late November. So we would be way beyond that, that statutory, you know, period, but I would look, I would speak to um, the planning director to see if she would be able to give me some information as to whether or not zoning variances are also requested on this project. And it would give you a little bit more information as to why it's being built the way it is. Um, and so that the public can be informed in the future when these items are coming before the planning board.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, uh, motion then, Mr. Wyatt, you'd like this tabled, correct?
Yes, motion to table.
Okay, motion to table, seconded by Mr. Rivera.
Motion to take item six from the table.
Motion is to take item number six from the table, seconded by Mr. Wyatt.
Item number six, supportive historical marker for President Lincoln's funeral stop.
Items open.
Okay, this item is open. Uh, Mr. Finn is supposed to be here to speak. I don't have the full uh, committee in front of me right now. Um,
Mr. Chairman.
Not see Mr. Finn here.
Mr. Chairman.
Staff, did we request him or?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this item uh, comes to us from Council President. And he had previously requested Commissioner Finn to join us. However, we did get a last minute note that he has spoken offline with the commissioner and received some information in writing. And given that, he would like to have this tabled in the meantime.
Okay.
Motion to table.
Okay, uh, motion is to table by Mr. Rivera, seconded by Mr. Bowman.
No further items, motion to adjourn.
Okay, a motion is to adjourn, seconded by Councilmember Noakowski.